Address in the chat. And we'll start with a in-person. Seeing knock. Uh, is there any? Comments online? All right, uh, same.
Can you? Sorry to interrupt for one second, Maria, can you just ask in the chat because I'm not sure if they can actually hear us. We're gonna restart the owl.
Now, okay. There you are, Ken.
Bye bye.
So I'll repeat again, if there are any comments online, please put your name and address into the chat. Still not, all right. So we will move on. I don't have a chairman's report tonight, still at the beginning of the year. You know, thank you for everyone taking the time tonight to come and present our meeting. And that's pretty much it. So from my perspective, it has been a great start to the school year, and I think we've heard that reiterated in our first meeting, so. Uh, we will move on to the consent agenda. Uh, so the consent agenda is the acceptance of warrants, vouchers, 1,012, and the payroll voucher for September 12th, 2024, as well as the minutes from our school committee meeting on September 3rd. Are there any questions on items or anything we'd like to discuss? Not seen any, is there a motion?
Or question to approve?
Excellent. Any discussion?
Jake, can you unmute? Exactly, thanks.
Uh, any discussion? We'll take a quick vote, all those in favor? All those guests? Thank you. Moving on. We'll start with some community reports. Uh, did the? Facility subcommittee meetings. In the last two weeks. Be in a meeting next week. All right.
Yes, for as well. Have that one.
That excellent. Uh, and next, the finance committee.
We did not meet.
Okay, excellent. The policy committee? Would like to.
Sure. Okay. We had three main discussions, one was on the policy updates and revisions that we're going to be undertaking. Some tech updates that have been handed over to the tech team for review and we will hear back from them at another point. Um, also some. Update recommendations that came through MASC but that are with. Colby at this point regarding central harassment policy that this.
Yeah, there's a lot of federalism now consequently state level title nine harassment updates. So we will be getting trained by Colby over the next month or so. And with that training, we'll be able to review better knowledge, the updates and how to refer changes. And we're looking at bringing something to the full committee by the end of November and some things in November on those. Um, and then as far as the bullying prevention policy update, we did look at the language. There are just some simple language changes that have been recommended, basically changing the language for the words aggressor and target in the bullying policy to victim and perpetrator. That's to be in alignment with state statute, which makes some sense. We, uh, the. Policy subcommittee is in support of these changes. Um, it's not on the agenda for a vote tonight, but we take a straw poll to make sure that that we're in alignment with this. Or can we do a first breakdown? Um, that one's just an update, but so what we can do is seeing the policy subcommittee was okay with what was presented. We will insert into the packet before we review next week and then take a form of vote and full revision of the changes. Okay, so that was the first section. Um, we had an informal discussion of cell phone and electronic devices based on the conversation we started at our last meeting. Um, really just getting the pulse from each of us in the room about what our thoughts were and where it can stand. So the way we sort of came to it is that. It appears that we all agree that elementary and middle school have a pretty clear philosophy. That they put forward along with their procedures for how they handle other handling of cell phone and devices at this time. And then some of the confusion or lack of clarity right now might just be understanding better what the philosophy and practice is at the high school level. So our thinking is that the first step would be to learn more about that. We have Julie coming. In another, is it next meeting? Yeah, at our next meeting and so that might be something to cover a little bit about. But the feeling of the group was we have varied opinions on matter of personal opinions. But the plan had was to learn what's already in place and what's taking place so that we can make informed judgments moving forward rather than. Knee jerk reaction, go too much or too little. So that's where we are with that. Um, and then we did discuss briefly the reserves policy. We continued the discussion that didn't have a kind of way from the meeting. Um, but we looked at the draft, the last draft, the main very first draft that was brought forth here. And Erica, who was the one person on our subcommittee who was part of the group, who was part of that. Help us understand, you know, basically the two sections of this. One is section about identifying a target number for reserves and the other section is to have some clarity on definitions, what we say reserves. And so that's the pieces that are. That are included in that draft and basically she explained that they're bringing that forward in the spring was an attempt to look for input back. So we were able to clarify some of the questions that that we had and that I had certainly. Um, and we thought tonight, um, we'd take a straw poll to see where. Where we're at in terms of the target that was identified, so kind of the question. One of the questions is, do we think we need a target number in the reserves policy? And it seems that the policy program subcommittee in their work had looked through a number of other districts and seen wide variety. Decided to move forward with putting a targeting and worked through a number of revisions and discussions. Certainly with administration as well and in our town partners coming in. And so landing on that number of eight percent is a target. So we thought we would take a straw poll to see if the broader committee feels comfortable with that. And if that's something that we have questions about for Pam or anything we can ask right now, it's not a formal vote. But if that's the case, then we can finalize the language and write a first read up to the next meeting. So we can really capitalize on the work that that did all last year, the hard work that they put in and move forward. So, so that's the, that's really the question is, is there anyone here who has? Questions or concerns about that target that was included there?
I said a clarifying question because last time, last year's subcommittee brought it. One of the questions on the table was, could we treat that target as a ceiling and then also articulate a lower bound? Did you all discuss that as a possibility?
No, we just discussed that as a, as a goal without necessarily. They have to be exactly that, but we didn't talk about a lower number at all.
Okay, I can start and I would be in support of a target. Uh, I would not be in support of a hard cap below what we already have for a hard cap. By amendment. And. I'm not sure. Limiting our. And copying our ability if needed to dip into resources for putting. Low category. But that's just. You know, off the top of my head.
It sounds like from the conversation we had today, that the group last year, as they were working through this thing, you guys really talked about. That number and came to it and walked away. It wasn't just, let's just take that in, but that there were negotiations and discussions and reasons for it. So I found that helpful. It's in alignment with our town partners. My understanding is the administration is comfortable with this as a target number. Am I correct in that?
We'll think as high in numbers as you want.
Yeah, yeah. Given how we've come to this and dual purposes that emerged over time, originally it was just. Codified the fact that in response to the orders that we have in process for changing reserves and. Something in writing that explains how we use them, what we intend. So Michelle was really helpful in helping us kind of pare down the language. We started really broad and we brought it down. So I think it defines what reserves are, we went through learning revolving accounts versus reserve accounts and by finding some of the language. When we get down to the bottom line, I think the language that says we seek to maintain balance, three percent of the annual operating and capital budget. It's aligned with where the town thinking is now, and the 10% we originally had is aligned with where the town thinking was when we originally. Uncodified. So. You can remember, I think we still have one town partner at eight point a 10. If that's correct.
So I'd like to hear a little more about just what the. Just like to hear a little more. Sure. Can be, you know, sweet. This stuff.
I think the helpful thing would be to know what is it you want to care more about? We want to know going out, coming out of tonight, what direction we want to, if this is agreeable to people who will move forward with finalizing language so that we can bring it first read. But if we're not quite there. Then we can put it on as a major. So what, what kind of information we can hear more about?
Also just, uh, you know. I definitely support a target, I just have some right now, I don't know, 8% is the best target. So I just like to understand a bit more about the. You know, benefits, you know, negatives, but that's just in general. Okay, so.
I mean, I'm not sure how much more we're going to be able to give you, because other men to say that there are. We looked at over the course of the last year, a number of different districts and. Part of the challenge in this, now I'm taking my phone about 12 months ago when we were working these policies, but my memory is that ranged anywhere from having no, no number, you know, split number to having five percent, obviously, 10%. And so, given that we were. We felt like we were tasked with landing on an actual number. That seemed, I think, a bit of a middle ground and it was important to have, having listened to our town partners in this regard, that. The feeling was whether this is, I know there's multiple viewpoints on this, but some could say that there is somewhat of a double counting or at least a cushion in our reserve policy by virtue of the fact that we have a reserve and our town also has reserves. So in light of that, I do feel more comfortable dipping below the 10% that some towns have, if they. Yeah, I, I, I think we are in a comfortable zone at 8%, but I fully appreciate them's perspective that, you know, the more reserves the better. Unforeseen economic challenges, so, but I agree with about this number. But there's no, there's not a formula that.
Yeah, I guess I was more curious of the, well. So it's not just unforeseen, it's right, it's also unforeseen limitations, right? And flexibility for that, but it sounds like you guys have taken all that.
You share.
Oh.
Forgot. I think sort of our discussion last year was what do we mean by target? How do we operate? In other words, is that the number by which if we go over it, we agree to use it? Is that, you know, a general range that we, you know, have some above and below on? Is that a bottom, like we don't ever want to go below it? So I'm not, you know, all of those are possible when we use the word target. So we spent a lot of time thinking about the language, about like when we would use it, when we would use reserves and when we wouldn't. And that's partly where the, the question about having a lower number came in. Uh, in part because of like protecting our credit, right? If it's target, well, we can have anything below we want, because I'm not sure, you said that. We, you don't want to go above what we have for a hard cap? I don't think we have any lower hard cap. Right, we have a maximum.
I would want the flexibility to be able to say that I wouldn't want.
I see what you're saying, okay, gotcha, that's helpful. Um, so. I think to me, that's the question is, what do we mean by target? Is it a ceiling, a floor, or a general number that we're floating around some?
Well, when I look at, once you, when I look at like the town of Essex financial reserve policy, their, their target and the circumstances, all of their, their funds, not, not any specific one, but. Um, it seems to be more of a philosophy statement, which I actually appreciate, so leaves them the flexibility to utilize in different ways. And, you know, for instance, it says. Town will strive to maintain overall general fund reserve. General fund reserves in the level of 10 to 15% of the annual operating budget. Adherence to this policy would help the town withstand periods of decreased revenues, we understand here certainly. And control spending during periods of increased revenues. There are multiple types of reserves and those into explaining all of them. So it seems to be.
But that's the 10 to 15% does give a lower and upper range.
But it's, it's a thing like a seat to maintain, right? Right, that you just said, yes, so we strive to maintain. And, and our draft line goes to the seats to maintain about 20%. So. All of this, and probably you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the number of the policies I've looked at. I don't recall any policy saying will. All of them street, speaking to get some latitude for uncertainty and because we can't land on them. So maybe there is an opportunity for us to say against a target number that people have been comfortable with, but maybe we do want to look at a little bit more closely at our town partners' policies and see if we do want to have an additional leverage to create a window, bringing that, because for instance, it might not be a lower number. I would probably be comfortable with eight to something higher, for instance. So that may be needed for further discussion based on what we're planning to do with this. If it's a seat to maintain, the timing of the window does give us a sense of, okay, well, we're getting toward a little high. First, we're getting toward, you know what I'm saying, it gives you a message. And I think that that could, that could be valuable. So I guess for our subcommittee, would it be agreeable to the board? A straw poll, not by official binding vote? For us to move forward in finalizing the language based on the 531 draft with some edits as, as needed that will ring for first read? Knowing that 8% is the number that has been brought forward and that we will work with, but also potentially bringing forth um, another number to create a window that then the whole committee can determine. Whether that's agreeable.
So I'll just say, if we're talking windows, in my view, in all our discussions in the past year and a half on this, that 8% would be the top of it.
I think that's up for discussion.
That's, I'm giving you my, yes.
Right, so right now, we just wanted to, we want to examine windows. In my mind, it's a word, in my mind, the word you're using to open, actually windows. So you just maintain 8%, whether it's 70% or 90%. I agree, I don't think there's anything else, but I think that we spend a long time getting. Taking things apart. Okay, so that's three of those. And it's a fine point of reference, and Sheldon appeared to be my math coach. But my background in all it serves, it's at 8% of our total operating capital, that would give us about 1,300 people. If we were to ever run into like a, get some budget on time and go into a 112 budget. So when you think about this, it's a little bit like household planning, how many months of, you know, survivability do you want to have on account? In case something goes wrong, we don't have access. So 8% on 35 million is about, what, 2.8 trillion dollars? It seems like a large number to just be sitting there as an estimate, but it's really. 8% for our overall budget, so that will have to. Anything from, you know, if you have a loss group, you're going to take something out of that. You need to make a roll now, that's not happened in many years. But that's why the P and D is there, so. 8%, I, I think this is an impart of science, but we've been going around for years, literally. Yep, we're just going to have to walk in now and then if you can pick a number and if something falls, we can always. I go to pitch many change of policy. Yeah.
And it's a policy.
Yeah, it is, but I also know, I believe that, you know, town partners and others will look to this policy and point to it. When, you know, if we are above, it will be a, a point of conversation for sure. So I just want to, we weren't legally obligated to, which are anything over 5% of the D to. Back to offset that. But that's. So what I'm hearing for direction for our subcommittee from the full board is that we move forward with finalizing language based on 8%. And I'm not hearing that you think we need to evaluate a window, but. Am I correct in that straw poll style? All right, then we'll be prepared for the 10 month meeting. That's it.
All right.
Much more thorough chat than.
All right, negotiation continued, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just ask some. Um, so just a few general updates and an enrollment update tonight. We got two wonderful open houses. The memorial school and the high school, Essex is coming up on Thursday night, most will end September of the house for me next week. Um, just want to plug, you have a, we're going to do four superintendent copies over the course of the year. One will be, like Allison Collins will come to one and our topic of discussion, anything but student services can be highlighted. So part to anybody with student services questions to come along. Um, our November one will feature kind of curriculum instruction, so Heather will be there to answer questions. I'll be writing our assessment report, we're going to do budget in January, and then kind of just a whole session. We said it would be really much harder later. So just trying to create opportunity that you're going to see them in different locations throughout the year. Feel very much like people are settling back into some old committed routines and that. We'll be able to raise, one has a year under their belt that came in last year, so we're starting to be able to put some things back in place um, to do some more outreach and people are comfortable coming back into school. Yeah, that's six to me. Uh, like last year, principals have given the, a few times, um, coming in October for small community building tours. So I will send you, you can write summaries, but this is just the schedule as of today. Just to kind of come around, begin classroom and talk about ultimately, see what it looks like. See what 24 looks like in the classroom, see 15 looks like in the classroom. So just fun walkthroughs, see what's going on, district why. And to save it's, yeah, I just had a little bit of this afternoon. Then, um, continuing along with general updates, you know, we have district reviews going on. So the NEAT's team, the Association of Schools and Colleges will be on site to conduct the elementary accreditation site visit. That will be complete with focus groups, meetings. For communities of schedules will roll out as we get closer to that date. But I think I've spoken about it before, this is an opportunity for them to come and compare what we've submitted in documentation and self-assessment against their standards. And to kind of come in and kick the tires and see through their lens, whether what we're seeing in that. We're going to give us some feedback on areas for growth as well as some areas for condemnation and. Lot of good information for building out our future differences, which is on the document. Bessie, we're in the process of submitting our initial assessment to them and the timeline and format is pending based on our submission on September 30. We've talked about this here before, the goal was to be more of an operational overview from some of our external partners. So we will. That, that was one of the reasons. Asked to be put on the list and we're hoping that helps them decide to look at the HR and finance side and government side, more so than the classroom side, but they're going to make the decision based on what they see and they think is right for us. So more news forthcoming in terms of potential timelines and dates. And when they do their site visit, it'll look very similar to the NEAT site visit, which is a combination of surveys and focus groups with all the constituents and stakeholders. So everyone will be sampled. So we're excited about that. Uh, technology facilities improvements, I was telling you before that we're hoping to have our little nook carved out for school committee, so it's a little sooner for setups. Our tech team has been very busy. Everyone's still waiting on a lot of tech delays in terms of deliveries. We've got our boards very late, but middle high school is on tap for the interactive whiteboard upgrade, you know. We've got all new ones with the building, we matched them in Essex using our reserve funds stabilization, which was derived from the interest income on the low ticket for Memorial School. We were able to use our leasing program, cyclical replacement of technology to release the fleet of interactive boards for middle high schools. So it will be broken out into payments over three years, but also set us up to be able to replenish that again. It's like, well, and have the cost of it built up. So. The goal with the leasing is to not create a funding cliff where you maybe scrape together end of year money one year or draw down from reserves and make a big $500,000 purchase and then not know where to go. So whether it be laptops for the staff, notebooks for the kids, or. Large technology investments that we know have a right for the shelf life, we're trying to build them in six, so their homes are the current financial history. So the team has been really busy putting, getting that up and running along with the upgrade on the laptop, so. I just wanted to kind of say kudos to them, I know they've been putting in a lot of 10 to 12 hour days to get everybody up. John's here to talk about Memorial School plan, but he's also been a big help launching Raptor visitor management. This is also part, initially came in as part of the Memorial School. Project that has been shared through, had for this, but John's site is the test site. So if you've gone to some schools. Um, around the state, you may have been asked to give you a license and they scan you in, use a filter badge for you. So that's a system I'm moving to here, which is, it creates an automatic background check for everybody that comes to the door. Logs you in, logs you out, creates a photo ID sticky badge. Um, and it gives us a warrant to acknowledge that property that shouldn't be. So we ran into many technical difficulties a long way. Uh, but John has been helpful and persistent in working with Jason and John to work out the thing. So you might want to talk about that a little bit. So just a big thank you to him because it has been a bit of a bear to roll out, but I think it's something that. Even in our little test move, we're funding interesting applications and helpful applications of it in terms of being able to share information across schools about. People or visitors that we want to have certain restrictions. So that's some good news and upgrading our safety protocols. Uh, the 2024 M-PAS results and accountability data. We don't know a lot, we know some of it's going to start rolling out next week with accountability data. I don't have a date yet, I plan to send. Student scores, whatever scores for distribution. Reality is it could happen between now and our next meeting, so I'm just kind of giving everybody a heads up. So I'm just kind of giving everybody a heads up. So of course sending an email for getting ready for your summit, it could happen right around the same time. But we will be digging into that over the next month or so. And our annual assessment review will be on November 5th. That's when that's Heather works with all the principal, we go through all of the top level report of where we are compared to last year. You know, when he spoils it from a higher level, sorry, yeah. Sorry. Nothing yet. And then you already mentioned, we have our Essex SBC meeting next week. Is the committee going to get the tour? The committee hasn't necessarily all seen the building yet. And then they're going to go through the letter that we'll share with you in the class meeting about the options for study going forward. My assumption is we'll be approving that, which will allow us to then move to the next step at MSBA, hopefully get from the board meeting for October to get officially moved into feasibility, which is talking about it out there yet, which will allow us to start working on bringing aboard, you know, the project manager, which will really get the ball rolling. And after the project manager comes on board, we get the architect, that's where the community outreach starts. So that's what all of the ideas, the interest people have can get vetted and brought to the table. And it'll really start to feel like it's moving towards a job. So really exciting time to be taking this on. So the committee should feel welcome and encouraged to come next Tuesday night and hear the discussion. And if you haven't seen the boil over yet, it's definitely to see. I have this for the difference was in your packet, so no surprises here. This is just, this is part one of the enrollment report. I think I say this every year, this is early preliminary thing can change, but likely change over the next few weeks. Particularly at secondary level, we're still adding, dropping and shifting people around. But this is just a top tier look at how enrollment is shaping out for the year. The one caveat, it's on here a couple of times, but this isn't accounting for students who are out of district placements, but are part of our enrollment. So this is just our in district headcount, inclusive of school choice and students who may be cross enrolled. So Essex students who attended Memorial, the memorial students who attended Essex are counted in those school accounts. You know, so they're counted in the enrollment at the school. So if you're an Essex student attending Memorial, you show up in the memorial school. Yes.
Did I just hear you say that this is just in district students now?
Just in district. At the October meeting, we're going to have the figure sheet, which has all of the section written down at the, at the high schools, middle schools, all of the specialized programming headcounts for people. So I guess if I'm looking at this, that what we're starting to see and principals may speak to it when they're talking about their school improvement plans is we're from my vantage point, we're in that funny place at Memorial and Essex where we have some classes who are above benchmark and that's not ideal. But they're not far enough above to justify bringing on more staff because that'll drive that number way down. I think looking at Memorial, John would like to speak to it. I think he can give me the sound decision with the evidence in front of him in the spring. And what we learned is we had a lot of quick movements this summer and we can't necessarily guess where those movements are going to come in. And sometimes they don't, we can hit the flat in class where you put the third section. So I think that's a little bit of what he's wrestled with there, being sure to leave a color commentary on that. I did run the numbers, if you went to three sections, I think the average would be 14 of 15 for grade level. So it's, that's that funny spot. Middle schools right down the middle mark of our average, plus five benchmark average. And the high school, this might be the, I don't know if it's a spoiler, but what we're seeing is the initial run. So this is all academic classes. Average out. We're averaging about 16 students per class with highs and lows. There's some one or two over 30 and there are certain, there are like five or seven under five. We'll have more detail on that.
Could you do the dance rather than the math?
I think when you see the sectioning. Did we predict the for often sites in the home? The kindergarten is a very small kindergarten class, I mean, second grade is small. Well, some questions? Oh, I just said, did she forget? No. Looking at the enrollment study that MSBA did, it should be flat, try to be not like crazy. To be prediction of how years are about to be 50. I think the sectioning report would have box two for the number of students cross. I'm calling it cross, we've got the keeping specialized programming. And I think I've mentioned that we're running into any kind of accessibility issues that are more that Essex. So some of the programming at Memorial, which we brought back to Essex once we had facility change. So that is bringing up the number of kids that are. Which I'll be, I'll be frank, it matters none to us internally, they were Manchester Essex students. So what the program is, is where we place them. But I mean, and it doesn't change your resident enrollment count for your budgeting, there's still. So it's just a matter of where they're achieving for them, just like in that district.
And so everybody just doesn't go on here in the same way. So this right field.
This, this is what we see in the classroom level. This is, and this is, we're going back years now. The October one report is the, is the report we use for financial planning. These are, this is what it looks like in our classrooms. This is what it looks like in distribution among, you know, when we do the sectioning for the elective sections have a much smaller average class size than the core class. You know, it kind of gives you a sense of how things are moving, building the filter through. But when we go into breakout or portion, we're using that's before.
I guess then you made the comment that we're at that difficult place in Memorial where going to free classroom, these could work on sound tubo and there are absolutely, it's a big one I remember, I experienced it in my own kids. But when I look at this, I keep taking my thoughts on the map the wrong time because I just kind of found it all very charming. But for instance, the fourth grade of 25, you know, so that's 15 kids in that grade. And this is, that's like, I could raise with John, but so if you break that down to three classrooms, you're going to have approximately 17 kids in class. That to me is a choice and obviously principal and educator input is welcome. But we are either ending up three above our benchmark or two below. Certainly from the parents I've heard from, for your preference, it could be on the other side. I think it's just, it's worth acknowledging that we've looked at this for the last few years.
School choice numbers are in there at the October first.
They are. All of our school choice this past year came in grade six.
But they're not in district.
They are. Every student physically in, physically present in schools, not out of district. These aren't, please not residents, so my district, these are kids in classrooms.
But that includes kids coming from other districts who are in their classroom.
Yes. Sorry, but a district is special education, out of district is, is not.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome. It's an important report, but it just gives you a little bit of a sense of how things are starting to work. And I do think we're going to have the questions to answer at Memorial and Essex, whether or not we should be looking at some point in time to have a staff. But that is, there is, I don't think there's science or to help us answer the question, it's really going to be a tolerance of visit. Do you, can you live with the under benchmark or can you live with the over benchmark? You move to an under benchmark, do you want to entertain small choice for an option? Maybe change, so that's a little bit of our. Should be the situation. This is, if this is a big answer, I think it might be to second answer. This space, why, why can't students? This space? Yeah, the learning commons is in a part of the street that would work me on bringing it back. It's not closed, but it's for use more of a traditional, as a traditional library of people's science passes that they're trying to bring in. But it's no longer the go to, they weren't going to, we brought on a T X. He's working on revamping program and working with teachers to bring kids here or send kids here intentionally, not just as a place to come for stuff. Or when the teachers have to be the odd one versus the opportunity revival.
Like in the revitalized library, I will say I've heard from families, these kids have study periods that are no longer.
I'll mention to George, I'm sure he'll be able to see this.
Was there anything else to hear from?
The one thing I do want to do is give a shout out to Kami at, I'm sure you guys have a lot more names. I didn't talk to them all day, but she got the advertising program up and running. I want to say it was to not over $20,000. But as I said to her, I have just, thank you that she's so tastefully, the, the ad taste will, they're out there for error measuring to make sure everything was centered. So I think it was, it's a very respectful and it's been a really nice launch. And so it was doing very, I think she said to me, she, right around, I will, I will go back.
So on to continue business. Go through our elementary school improvement update. That's the new layout. It's great.
Changed everything.
Yeah. I liked it quickly.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so we're still waiting. So back to the, so I feel really fortunate to have Kim next to me for this foreseeable future. So I have a partner, we worked together at Memorial years ago and she came up to middle school. And so it's, it's nice to be back together. A lot of the work that we're going to describe, Sheila Gavin's worked on over the past couple of years. She was a great partner as well. So we're going to kind of bounce back and forth through the highlights of our achievement. We're going to try to focus just on last year, so we're not going to say anything like that. At the last presentation, in terms of our accomplishments, closing out this school plan and then we're starting a new, a new two year cycle. So we'll start off with kind of where we've been. So strategic condition of number one. A big piece of that has been in the S process as Pam mentioned before. I didn't quite realize what a massive undertaking it is, but it is, it is a very, very thorough process. The reason we embarked in this, on this, on this project really was more about bringing the two schools together and working on a common, common project. More so than necessarily the standards and, and to get that, because when you first look at the standards, it aligned really well, way we do business at that whole elementary school. I think a lot of that has to, you know, kind of our target of getting kids ready for high school. So at this point, what we did last year was we brought the two staffs together multiple times to overwrite this massive final report that is now very close to being submitted. I would say the next seven to 10 days or that minimum submit. It is, it is massive and the pen, so to speak, of every staff member at both schools has been mapped right. So we worked together with Google Docs, smaller groups, people took different sections based on their expertise, their grade level, that sort of thing. Mix the two schools together. And then on the back end, Sheila and I went through and kind of tried to make it all, well, that's if one person wrote. So that's very close to being submitted. And then we have the site visit on October 22nd and 23rd, where a team. So I'll say from the S, but actually it was a team of educators across the state. Two, the two people that, yeah, several businesses, the, the two the two chair people, one is retired curriculum director and one is a current superintendent. And then there'll be principals and teachers from other NEAS schools that come into those schools. We're, our process is very big in that we're, I think we're one of the first elementary schools and also elementary schools that are doing it combined. So when you look at the report and the whole process, they're looking at a set of important ones, we have just six elementary schools, which is just kind of been a great kind of a great north star for us working together to get on the same page with some things. I think through the process, we realized we're on the same page more than we realized with a lot of things. And going through the process, it's like, oh yeah, you know what, we do this and we do this and it would be better if we did this. So a lot of that kind of coming together has, has already happened. So that'll be October 22 and 23. Part of that is the concept of authentic learning. It was in the district plan as an elementary staff, we realized that everybody had different definitions and actually all, all the same in all of the fall of four schools. So we worked together at each school to write a common definition of authentic learning and then. So Heather brought a team together of teachers from all four schools to come up with addition, district definition for authentic learning. We also took inventory of the authentic learning activities that are already in place. As you all know, at elementary school, it's very, a lot of hands on, a lot of inquiry, field trips, that sort of thing. So we're a pretty, pretty big list of what we're already doing. And that's kind of been a focus of, out of several schools, I come up with additional opportunities. Let's see, so another aspect that we've been working on for a couple of years is our MTSS model. So we transitioned from two RTI models to, to MTSS models and then merged them together, objectically an MDRSD, elementary MTSS model. Our literacy and math interventionists moved from site based. So we have literacy and math specialists at Memorial, literacy and math specialists at Essex. They're now district employees, so they fall under Heather's umbrella. So she's their primary supervisor, supervisors, which just gives some flexibility. But, but more so that the flexibility, it kind of gives a common law. So depending on, you know, it doesn't matter which school you're in, if we score here, you get, you get services. So that's kind of a pretty success. We also, thanks to all of you, last year at the end of our presentation, you said, what do you need? And we talked about hiring instructional coaches. So we hired two incredible instructional coaches of literacy and math that shared between both schools. Right now, we're kind of working on building the model, they are working on just getting to us, getting in classrooms, seeing the way you do things. Our instructional practices, our assessment practices and just really kind of big and large kind of entry plan situation for them right now. So we've got a lot of big plans for them coming down the road. I ready, so a couple of years ago, we, we started to kind of play around with the bypass platform in I ready, which is a self-adjusting module where students can get harder tasks, easier tasks depending on how they're performing in the, in the system. So it's kind of like individualized path for students in literacy and in math. So all of the teachers have been trained on that and they're implementing it as they see appropriate in the classrooms. Another big piece was, and this will, this will kind of right into the S is the. Uh, another big piece was, uh, and this will, this will kind of hold right into the ask is the curriculum alignment between the two schools. Um, so we started off with curriculum journaling, so just kind of capturing at both schools and in every grade. What is taught, when, how, that sort of thing, um. We transit, transitioned back to something a little more tangible, um, a little more public facing. So the teachers from both schools work together on two, three family curriculum guides, um, so it's just a one feature, uh, for each, uh, trimester, each grade and each subject. So that a parent can easily look and see, again, whether you sit in a fourth grade class at Essex or in Manchester, uh, this semester in. Um, the subject is some of the things that I can expect from my child somewhere, um, it kind of keeps us all on that same, uh, same page. Uh, let's see. So degrees five to six transition, uh, the team building, um, already kind of starts to make some adjustments. Kim kind of has been on the receiving end of that, I know for the heater, so, um, she brought some great ideas for the future, uh, but some of the things that we did was, uh. We combined the musical, um, so that was something that, um, was done at Memorial, um, Essex did something a little bit different, we decided to do it together. Tyler Garofalo, I don't know how, like, I don't know how many magic bombs she has, but, um, she'd worked with the students in Manchester, at Manchester. She worked with the students at Essex, in Essex for a period of time, you know, five or six weeks. Put together all the pieces of the public war, um, musical, and then one week before, we're going to spend them all together. Um, they do dress rehearsal and then put on this incredible show. Um, our music teachers at Old School. Both schools help, uh, kind of teach the kids some of the songs, that sort of thing, so just great, uh, collaborative approach, uh. The parents from both schools work on kind of, um. All of the backend things, the fundraising and costumes and a set and that sort of thing, so it's a great opportunity for the parents from both schools to get to know each other as well. Um, so that was a big undertaking. Um, let's see, we've done that twice now, so we'll be the third year. Um, the fifth grade students also went on a, a shared field trip to, uh, to Boston, um, Freedom Trail. And, um, then the district supported, uh, a trip to Marine Farm, uh, for team building and project adventure. Uh, so one of the things that Sheila kind of started conversations in the spring, um. So she started conversations with the Essex Shipbuilding Museum, um, Kim picked up all of the, um. Met with the folks over there, so they have this idea where, uh, the graders from both schools will go over, uh, maybe like the fall or winter. Um, and they'll build, um, breeding crab traps, we're in a lot of breeding crab species, um. So they'll build those and then, um, the, uh, folks at the Shipbuilding Museum will place them out in the river. Um, and then in the spring, both groups will come back again, um, and take, uh, this around the students. Student made roads, not that our students made, but students for the past, um, the high school students, college students, uh. So they'll take the road boats out to the crab traps and bring them in the crab traps, uh, and so learn kind of. Um, about ecosystem, uh, but also, you know, kind of that, that, that team building of, of, of creating the traps for a public purpose. Uh, so we're kind of in talks there that does some outreach to get donations and that sort of thing, so, uh, we're just kind of finalizing details there. Uh, project adventures, and we had them committed into a training of, of staff of both schools, uh, so that was, uh, kind of like, uh, a force team building, I guess. All of a sudden, that was like a trust bridge of, um, people that I know so well. And, uh, so anyway, so the staff, um, select the staff from both schools went through that training and now that's in place at both, uh, both sites. Um, when the new memorial was built, we tried to replicate the equipment that was at Essex and Preston, we can listen, uh, the strengths. Uh, part of that, uh, so, uh, so that they have a lot of experience at those schools. Venture, uh, creating partnerships, and this is definitely, I cannot take front for this, um. This was, uh, Sheila McAdams, uh, thing that she brought in, so the open door, uh, pantry truck. So it's a global market that comes to both schools up here in Essex, but then Memorial comes on early in the season.
Yes, we sound like that.
Yeah. Um, so either after school or early in the stage, um, pulls right up to the playground. The side opens up, it's like a little market, they got, you know, grocery bags and that sort of thing, um, it's something that's open to everyone, um, so staff. Uh, students, uh, you know, parents, um. The playground at Memorial has become, um, quite the gathering space, uh, for the community, um, I think even more so each year that people kind of find it. Um, it's, it's pretty adorable that you see their kids go running down the street with a bag of like. Bananas and potatoes and all, saying bring some dinner home to their, to their family, so, um, that's been really good. Um, and then the safe routes to school, uh, bike and, uh, walk, walking safety training that happens on both schools and, and as well. Um, who's that talking about? Number two.
So second initiative, which is around social emotional learning, incorporating our form of learning into all areas of the school day. So the first school area was around creating an F C L leadership model, and this was done, um, for a month K through eight, but there was a district coordinator identified. So we do. That hat on as well, so there's the district coordinator selected, and then there's also a building based person at high school level, so there's an elementary. Um, F C L leader and then a memorial F C L leader, and so they really take the charge on supporting staff and incorporating F C L into the school day. As you know, we use the program ruler, that's sort of our tier one F C L approach, um, so they've been really taking the lead and, and helping. Staff find out ways to incorporate that during the day and then teaching them in private professional development. And but that comes, that sort of instructional planning and professional development, so. Over two summers ago, a group got together and created like a scope and sequence. For social emotional learning based off of verbal curriculum. You go into the curriculum, it's very fast, and we could have a whole school day of teaching F C L, um, through that curriculum, so it was really about. Narrowing some of that down and finding out what are we actually going to focus on, what are the motion force that we're going to use? Um, and what are the particular like lessons that are going to really hone in at each grade level, uh, based off of that, and through there, we used. E D during faculty meetings, um, to allow the F C L leaders to share with teachers about this. Um, instructional scheduling, so. Two years ago, I think there was this, there was a block built into the elementary schedule that was really just for social emotional learning. And it got mixed reviews in terms of its effectiveness of, some teachers really liked that carved out part of the day, and some teachers felt that it was. Like a little like forced, like regardless of F C L time, so wanting to make it more authentic, going back to that authentic learning. Wanting to find ways to incorporate it more into the school day, so it revamped a little bit, so now, um. It is more of an integrated time and teachers finding ways to work on social emotional learning skills within their own lessons, finding ways to incorporate it into their back curriculum. Into what they're reading in English, um, to find ways to incorporate it throughout, and a nice. A nice switch. Um, family engagement and social emotional learning, uh. Very good, leaving ongoing, I think, um, putting my district's coordinator hat back on when we did a survey with. Families on their views of social emotional learning, one of the things that did come back is that families felt they weren't involved enough in the process or didn't know enough about it. But then this will be an ongoing piece, um, district wide of making sure that families really know what's going on, so you'll hear about that a little bit. We get into the, uh, actual school improvement plan, but we have used, teachers have used their classroom newsletters, we've done it in. We leave a newsletter that we, that family were. Going on a little pen and trips and both have to use it. And then school and classroom, climate culture, um. Have the ongoing yearly, um. Push to create classroom charter, which is part of the board program, so each classroom determines how they want to feel. A student decide how they want to feel when they're in school and they create a visual representation of it that is hung in their classroom and around the building. And then usually do a school-wide, um. Charter as well, that one they're all together in the same space, that was a community meeting, we can talk about that. Strategic initiative three, this is on diversity and equity and inclusion, so. There was a representational audit, and I might rely on a little bit on the history of this year, uh, being new to this position, so it sounds like they went through, um. Websites, classroom websites, our, our own school website, looked at letters that get sent home, uh, yearly to families, just to make sure that we're very inclusive of all of different cultures. They're very, um, thoughtful about the vocabulary that we use when we talk with families, and just are more mindful in that the forefront of. Of who is hearing this information and who may not hear this information that might be feeling left out, um. Sort of that, great. We reintroduced our understanding, our differences model, that's been happening in the grades three, four and five level, that was something that was in place years ago. Um, it kind of fell, maybe around like open, yeah, and now we've introduced it again, I think it just started again last year. Um, so I'm through staff training on, um, just identifying diverse characters and regular materials, so using the wonders, um. Reading and that curriculum support on making sure that everything that we're picking from there has the mirrors and windows of diverse characters, so that kids can wide range. Um, see that, and then this classroom library audit. Staff seat training on, um, classroom audit tools, so they can take a look at the books that are in their classroom to make sure that there's a wide range representation.
Uh, and so, um, it's funny, we, we had submitted our, uh, our draft and asked for a.
Hi, Chuck.
Miss Chuck. Um, and, um, we kind of chuckled because at the end, uh, uh, you know, school program plan cycle, um, it's great to say when. Things are completed, and so all of the, um, holes in the plan have either been created or, I'm sorry, have been completed or completed or ongoing. The things that are ongoing are things that you just probably would not ever want to, and so for example, parent engagement and involvement in the F C L processes. Just kind of, so, um, yeah, so a lot of, since that. What are your questions after that part or? In the boss, because I'm in fact, the question was. All right. So, uh, our plan, uh.
Sorry, I brought hard copies in case anyone didn't have it, have computer. So let me know if I have one, but I love. I just say. Don't want them at the end, just didn't know what we found second. Sorry.
That's okay.
Well, we're good. I just wanted to say that the, um, just looked at a really great job normalizing pieces of the. I remember very specifically beginning of that. I don't need this thing, I don't feel right taking it, taking part in this thing. And, um. A month in, you know, it, it was the second time around, people were getting it. There were people that would walk up and say, no, this is what this is for.
Yeah.
To really allow that to be the case, I could keep going now on totally. It's funny because I was thinking similarly, but this year it just re-ran to you, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Schedule came out and it wasn't. Haven't asked about that, where, is there a complete combining schedule?
Uh, it's, um, in our newsletter, um.
With your dad and, um, your dad.
It's on what? It's. Yeah, and if you just look up Open Word, we can read it right on our website, too, and when they're at. Yeah.
Mark, it's right, something you said.
Oh, um.
I'll look it up where you guys talk.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's better.
So I think.
First, let's, but that is definitely, let me take a first. We could first one stay at Memorial. And shells from.
Yeah, and I, I can, I can tell you, just from the staff perspective, that for a second. So we're, that, you know, um, and now, there's a lot, actually, as soon as, you know, they're done for the day, all right. So, yeah, it's like. Um, so our plan that we wrote, uh, has been written, uh, in collaboration with our school for both councils at each school. Um, this is technically for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six, um, but I anticipate that we will want to make some changes this time next year. Um, explain that a little bit, so, uh, when we go through this, you're going to see things that fall really into two big buckets. Um, one big bucket is the E S process, and the second big bucket is continuing the alignment between the two elementary schools. Uh, when the S two gives us our, our report, which is going to be for a couple of months. Uh, I think there may be some things in there, we try to anticipate, um, what they're going to give us for, um, feedback suggestions. But there may be some things in there that we want to, uh, tweak this a little bit or be a little bit more specific, uh, in action based on, uh, their recommendations. Um, so the first big goal, uh, is to continue the E S process, um, so we're working on identifying priority areas of growth. Uh, that's what we submitted, uh. A couple of days, actually, um. Let's see, uh, then we'll receive a report from them after we've submitted our final report and our identified areas of growth based on their standards. And that'll be sometime November, December, um, the E S steering committee, um, so that is, um, a staff member. Leader from Essex and staff member leader from Memorial, um, and Kim and I, so we'll review, um, the report, uh, that they give us, um, probably after the new year. Uh, that we probably shared with the community, um, staff and, uh, larger community, um, I think it's been in the spring. Um, and then we integrate their recommendations into our student record update next year at this time. Let's see. Um, so another, so this would be in the alignment bucket, I, so Kim and I are working together, um, to look at our teacher assistance team process. Um, so that's when we have a student class, um, and a teacher for idea, support, uh, suggestions, recommendations, things to try. Um, to help the child be more successful, uh, we have two, um, different models in which schools, and so we're working together to have, um. Both schools have the same model or similar model, um, and a, you know, con- consultation model, um, where in the past. Uh, teachers would have to wait for their student to come up, um, on the schedule, um, and this way we have kind of a, uh. Kind of like a triage model, so to speak, where the counselor kind of does the intake and then identifies who the expert is, knowing everything, that's the teacher directly with that expert, um, for suggestions. Observations, that sort of thing, whatever, um, sometimes that leads, um, to evaluations and that sort of thing from our special, um, department. And sometimes it's just helpful tips and that sort of thing, um, to teach the problem. Sure, is that about academics? The question really, more always taken, you know, how they can interface or. How can we access? Yeah, so prior to M T S S or R T I existing, it encompassed everything, so academic, social, emotional, um, you know, speech language, um. Attention, that sort of thing, uh, but now that we kind of have those two machines, uh, working, uh, in terms of literacy and math. That has kind of its own process and then everything outside is a bit, so we follow this, uh, into this process, thank you. So we actually have two separate workshops, one for M T S S and one for T H. Uh, okay, so the next piece I mentioned earlier a little bit, but, uh, it's actually the next few bullets of promotions and coaching. Um, so we're working, so Kim and I are working with Heather, the director of curriculum, um, to develop, um, the plan for what coaching is going to look like. Uh, the two coaches that we hired have been in some public districts, um, our agency blocks, it's due to our teachers. Um, at first, we first kind of announced that this was happening, they're all kind of like, what is this thing? Uh, so we want to kind of thoughtful, slow, um, identify different coaching models, identify where our needs are. Um, and then kind of build that model up with, with the coaches, so we have multiple meetings set up with the coaches, um, so the three of us meet with that and kind of, um, to look at engineering of. Plan or program, um, and then Kim, we took each of them individually to talk math, you know, Essex math specific things. Literacy, Essex specific things, I think they do the same as well, um, so we can look and take it up and try to, try to practice something certain thing. Um. I'm going to be looking to the coaches to, uh, help us with the authentic learning goals, um, so coming up with some authentic learning activities for each grade level and their respective disciplines. Um, and we also started to talk about, um, uh, family community engagement, so we have, uh, this awesome, um, scheme, um. Event that started at preschool, um. There was one also at Essex that kind of, um, sprouted, uh, and then Memorial was brought in, so we did a K twelve theme event. Um, here last year, which was incredible, so we're looking to have a replicate, um, probably starting at the elementary level with, um, getting that night family and recite that, that sort of thing. So the next, the next goal is, um, to, um. A topic that Pam was talking about earlier, which is library access, so again, thanks to, uh, the budgeting process and the support from this group, we were able to add a library teaching assistant. Um, to, uh, here, I guess, um, so you had a solid schedule, so like she is not at the. I guess, um, she had a side of a schedule, so like she is not at Memorial, uh, the teaching assistant there, which is about Essex. Teaching system there. So our libraries are open to staff every, um, every school day. Um, there have already been just so many incredible ideas that have come out of that. Kate Donovan is the person I've hired. Um, she's subbed actually in both buildings for years. Uh, so she, she kind of knows K through five, um, the curriculum, expectations. Um, and she's got some great, which she's been working with, of course, with, so, um, so rolling that out to be um an effective model, it's something to work on. Um, one of the things that we've gotten a lot of feedback on is the difference in the performing arts. Performances, I guess you could say, is the culminated performances at the two schools. So we're going to work to align uh the two schools performing arts performances uh as a means of aligning performing arts or the music, uh, specifically curriculum. Uh, so that's exactly what I'm, you know, started, started with Sheila and I. Um, so, uh, I probably should have mentioned this at the beginning. All of those goals, if you notice in the plan, they have a aspect next to the district's student initiative footnote. Um, those are all the goals that Manchester and Essex are working on together. Um, and in, in some areas, we have built the specific goals. Um, so in this area, I have one building specific goal. Um, and it's actually a school-wide evaluation call um to uh support teachers, uh, to kind of get out of their own classrooms and learn from one another. Uh, so doing peer observations within the building, within other buildings in the district, but then doing uh observation also of other schools, which statistically is tricky, but we've got some ideas. Where people can get out of the district and go to, you know, a neighboring community or, you know, they have a friend in a similar community or a not similar community to see how things are going in other places. Um, I think back to, uh, I taught fifth grade in East End Stadium, uh, the building was kind of similar to this where it was um, uh, a shared core and the two separate buildings on each side. So I taught fifth grade, there were seven fifth grade teachers on my side, there were seven fifth grade teachers on the other side. Uh, it was crazy because we talked about like the Manchester Essex, you know, uh, differences in elementary schools. Um, I had no idea what they did literally on the other side of the building. Uh, there was just like, uh, you know, a bridge, so to speak, connecting outside. Um, we did things very differently and then eventually we started going to each other's room. Teaching the same thing, one of the ones for each other. So, um, so that's kind of a big goal for the next two years is to get people out to.
So, following on what Sheila put in the thing for the African school clubs that was made, um, kind of deep breath when I was like, is it an interview topic of thinking for the back two years and to make sure that the community feels a part of, of the Essex school building? So our goal is to continue with expansion with community partnerships, um, to provide those after school clubs to students. So we are in the process of um finalizing them right now for the first session to begin in mid-October. Um, I will just throw this into the universe, let it show a community member or know a community member with a special um talent or skill that they can bring for the students of Essex. There's room for another club or two that we could host. Um, so just a little plug there. So we will do um three sessions of clubs running about six weeks, it was worth a little makeup. Go right around Thanksgiving break. Thanks for Thanksgiving being so late this year. And then we'll do another one after the new year starts. And then probably some of the feedback that was kind of spring, that's a little tricky with the sport having to play. So we'll still run sessions, but it may not be as problematic or difficult because of sports restrictions. Um, so that is something that we will continue to do under that. So moving on to strategic initiative two, our shared goals um between Essex and Manchester. So one will be the implementation and alignment, down topic of alignment being a big focus here. So that alignment of the social emotional learning scope and sequence between the two schools. So ensuring that all the grade levels are doing the same thing, that we're all on the same um pathway. So students are having the same experience by the time they reach middle school. So sharing the scope and sequence with staff and practicing it and then constantly refining and tweaking what we're doing to make sure that we're on that. Um, another thing is providing resources to families. So at one of our recent ad councils, we had a kind of a psychologist come in to talk with district administrators about anxiety, which cannot be lead to the chronic absenteeism of school avoidance. And we thought, wow, this is such great information, like here's an expert here, can we have, can we, how can we get this information up to parents? Um, so we're gonna start, she's going to provide some words for our newsletters of intent and of help parents. Help that communication. Also in terms of family engagement, as I said earlier, really starting to engage, um, this is actually an Essex. Uh, really starting to engage families and what's going on with ruler. So between newsletter and email updates, there will also be S E L opportunities at the open house. So there's a ruler-related activity at Thursday's open house as part of the chat, the student scavenger hunt that they'll be doing. Um, that's ruler-related and then um really working on um one thing for next year would be hosting with the family charter night, so having families come in and create a family charter with their kids. Um, to use at home and really start the process for you. And I have one more. Another um Essex goal is for dedicating a calm space in the building for students to go if they're having sensory regulation issues or just need quiet things out of the classroom. All of our classrooms have integrated like calming corners within their classrooms. But sometimes students need a space outside of the classroom to be able to re-regulate. So we did open up a space, um, our school adjustment counselor and op, Melbert, this played a huge role in this. Um, so they have developed a love space that would stay there all day. If I could, it's lovely to just be able to relax and regulate students that are starting to use it with the support of staff and the building, so just having that space available, um, students to use that there and how they can use that would be.
Great. Um, and something at Memorial that, um, we're really excited about. So years ago, probably twelve, thirteen years ago, um, we embarked on the P P I S path. So positive behavior intervention strategies. Um, and a big piece of that is um common expectations, teaching kids expectations. Um, and then also recognizing students who are um meeting our expectations, um, in particular our core values. Um, so our core values were established now thirteen years ago. And coming out of COVID, there was a lot of discussion about, oh, should we read, you know, it's kind of getting stale, should we read them? Um, core values, we should write the core values and there are a lot of thoughts on both sides of that. Um, and we kind of came down to like, if these are your core values as an organization, they don't generally change, uh, tend to change drastically, um, just because, you know, time has gone. Um, and all of the core values are still relevant, but we needed to kind of breathe some life into it. So, um, my school adjustment council Rebecca Garros and I had countless conversations over the course of last year about like how can we revitalize this? And then she surprised me, um, beginning of August, she gave me a call and said, hey, uh, can I like something to you? I've got this idea of a work involved. And she came in, it was like Christmas morning, she, uh, she had this whole PowerPoint of rejuvenation of core values. We used to use art tickets. Um, so it's a ticket system and the kids can take, uh, trade the tickets in for um things like core value bracelets. So this is um an example, these are the core value bracelets that the staff of all wear. So if you come to the tour, you might just get one. Um, so it has all the core values on it. Um, and then we have different colored bracelets for each core value. Um, so the students, if they get a certain number of, um, you know, let's say effort, um, tickets, they can trade them in for a red effort. Um, bracelet, so we're gonna give us that, you know, hopefully one, flex the whole, the whole set. Um, but also they can trade them in for um different experiences with staff. So, you know, I'll talk a little bit more about this in a bit, but, you know, ping pong game against stuff, so we're gonna have some examples. So, um, different kind of um ways for kids to engage and be recognized um for the good behavior of that. Um, so that's what that'll be, uh, we rolled it up to, uh, the staff, the open staff meeting, students that they were putting up.
Next initiative is around um culture, equity inclusion. So the first shared goal is implementation of the diversity in history um curriculum. That was uh set forth by the Department of Ed, our, our fifth grade piloted it last year. And it's been here, continue to roll it out as it comes through. But it does a nice job of um providing really inclusive perspectives and experiences for students. Um, it had three recruits from the teachers that were piloting it last year and implementing it, so we're excited to keep that going. Uh, the next one is um exposing students to authors from diverse backgrounds. So Samantha Violet is really taking the lead with this. We have author Pina Khan coming in, uh, in November. November, uh, she's coming in in November to do book talks with the students. So, um, keeping that going on top of like the enrichment offer visits that happen throughout the years. This is an indication to that, to just provide students with more diverse authors and exposure to that. And then, um, taking the opportunity as a new leader in the building, having a goal around looking at the different cultures and traditions and events that happen at Essex, to make sure that they're culturally inclusive. Um, and really examining like, why are we doing this? Who is benefiting it? Who is, who is like benefiting from it? Who's been turning off in a way? So really taking the time to look at the different things that happen at Essex and not saying that anything needs to change. But just taking the time to look at it and um dig a little deeper with it. So making a list of all of the experiences that happened throughout the school year, the current traditions, um, creating a calendar, including events for families. And then just revising and implementing.
Um, and so a couple of memorial specific things, um, and part of this, I have to kind of give a tip of the cap to Allison Collins. Uh, over the past thirteen years, uh, she and I have worked really hard together um to creating specialized programs, um, that are housed at Memorial. As Kim mentioned before, um, a big piece of that is the, um, the access limitations. At, it's a certain building, so that will, will change over time. Um, but so we have a number of specialized programs, uh, that students from both Manchester and Essex and other uh communities on tuition basis can attend. Um, so we have a year old program is a, um, a second and third grade girl program for the fifth grade girl program for students with dyslexia. Uh, we also have a upper and lower sale program, um, so it's students, I'm sorry, uh, social and academic, social academic integrated learning, so students who have academic challenges and also social skills deficits. Um, then we also have the integrated preschool, um, uh, program, which grew from one part-time class to three full-time classes with, um, a pretty extensive list. So over the years, um, just the kind of the, the, the landscape of our, um, our school has changed. Um, and I myself could not be more proud of, um, the school is, it has, has kind of developed into this incredibly diverse and inclusive environment. Um, I mean, Marie and I have like the front row seat, literally seeing children like take their first steps out of wheelchair in front of our eyes, uh, outside of careers window. I mean, it's, it's really incredible. Um, we have a number of students who are coming in through our preschool program. Uh, so we get kind of, uh, there's nice weekend, it kind of like CP and what's to come. Uh, but there's a number of students who are coming through, um, the awesome spectrum, um, that are kind of aging in or about to age in. Um, so one of the things that we want to work on is, you know, we built these programs. The programs are highly effective. Uh, we have students that, um, that are graduating from these programs, so to speak. Um, so students who are dyslexic but go through our Earl program that are able to graduate, so to speak, and fly on their own. Uh, but one of the pieces that we want to be better at is the transition. Uh, so when a student comes from another town or from a sixth elementary into one of these programs, um, what transition happens there in terms of sometimes short-term counseling, uh, with that transition, um, and that adjustment? Um, and maybe even longer-term mentoring and that sort of thing. So that's something that we're going to work on, um, being a little bit better at. Um, just looking at the data, um, kind of from a very high level. We have three hundred and five students at Memorial, uh, thirty-seven of them don't live in Manchester. So school choice, preschool, um, and also specialized programs. So, um, it's, it's pretty incredible. And, um, just to see a school over the years change like that and, um, embrace, um, um, these differences have been incredible. So we're also seeing, uh, a lot of students, increasing students. I think it's, um, I think it's maybe the generation, I think it's when people spoke of it. And I think it's also kind of the profiles that I was talking about, a lot of kids having movement breaks, um, incentives, sensory breaks, that sort of thing. Um, so, um, with the support of our P T O, we were able to purchase a number of um, kind of gross motor activities, um, that are, um, throughout the, the main area of the school, the hub. Uh, so ping pong tables, um, air hockey, basketball, Jenga, cornhole. Uh, things that teachers can use as incentives and rewards, uh, that they can use for movement breaks. Um, I saw earlier today, obviously, we get a little preview of the, of the air hockey. And it was one of the specialized programs around there happening, um, a movement break. It looked like maybe something that they had earned, um, as, as reward. Um, so just being responsive to the needs of students that gather in front of us. Um, and trying to kind of think outside the box to best meet their needs. I think the kind of the byproduct of that also, we talked a lot about attendance and that sort of thing. Um, uh, you know, when you, when you have a place that's fun to go to, kids want to be there. Um, and so we got a lot of feedback at the Woodhouse from, um, parents who like their, their kids could not wait for school to start. I mean, they wait to get to school in the middle, which is pretty incredible. So we worked out the problem. And then our last strategic plan, I think it's on the plan. Uh, so we're going to be more collaboratively with, um, district administration, the school committee, um, to hopefully identify needs and, um, and present a responsible, not responsive, um, project for. Thank you. Any questions?
Question, uh, I want to know this. It's a great to have my team and continuing, this is just, it warms my heart and now I mean having kids in elementary. Question for you back in strategic initiative one, about the authentic learning inventory. You know that, is there a plan to, uh, launch this somewhere where, where parents and others and community members can visualize? Form this amount of work getting this kind of stuff up on the list. Is that something that's accessible or they could come that way? That's awesome.
I think because, yeah, uh, I think it's kind of a, you know, big document, so because it changes. I mean, it changed like on the drive over, you know, some other idea kind of fell into place. And, um, at the elementary level, there's just, there's just so much, you know, uh, with that, you know, the technology can certainly have something else up and that could be added by.
I just think that would be really helpful for, not just the parents of those schools.
Yeah.
My second question was the, um, the observation, showing here's observation back. Is that a shared goal E P S also or is that just happening at Memorial? And try to follow along or we're not going there yet? Yes. Um, so. That's fine. I just wanted to clarify for my own interest.
Good question. So, so phase one was, was last year, uh, which was transparent classrooms. Um, so I presented to guys, to staff, um, about people volunteering to be a transparent classroom. And what that means is simply like, so they have a little icon and it's next to their name tag on their door. And anybody walking down the hall can easily look over and see, oh, that's a transparent classroom. And what that means is the teacher there welcomes anybody to come in for five minutes, ten minutes, a whole period, half an hour, whatever, and sit down and observe and just see how they do their thing. Uh, I think, I want to say about ninety-five, ninety to ninety-five percent of the classroom have that little circle. Um, on the floor. Um, and so the idea there was just to, uh, you know, if you're on, on your way back to making photocopies in your elementary, five or ten minutes, you know, they're wanting to be popping up there. Um, we also came up with, um, a schedule for coverage so that people could set up for coverage to go in for longer periods of time. So I think that probably might be the next step.
I think there definitely is a need, as I said, a small, small building is definitely in those two hallways. So you, I, I'll be here like the upper elementary, always that, oh, I know I knew what happened in the other hallway. So I think there. So I think there is, um, a door there to integrate something like this. Because I even am thinking like, oh, maybe for this year, I suggest that something up in the teacher's room of like, check out what's happening in grade one, check out what's happening in grade two, where, where staff can post like examples of, of word board, like picture from their class, just so people can be more in the know of what's going on around the building without like the stress of feeling like they need to go visit, um, a class during their time. So might incorporate that to see a little.
Final question is, we didn't talk much about the Raptor program, but since you're here and the answer is question, I just have a little question about that. Which is, I read all the detail, but what happens if you're, if you don't have a license? Like if you're not someone who actually owns a license or does that?
Yeah, so, so you can use a state issued ID or driver's license. Um, if you don't have it, you can, I'm sure they should, and still wants the same background check. We can also put customized alerts in, like I said, what Dan was referencing. So, um, if there's a certain situation, uh, somebody has a trespassing order or restraining order, that sort of thing, from a customized alert. Um, and when a person, um, scans, um, certain people automatically get texts and we don't know the picture. So Dan and Michelle, again, for all of these tools, and the principal, and it's, so we're doing a little trial. That was a sample that we use. So, yeah, it's actually working very effectively.
That, you can answer my question, thank you. To be, we're testing it at Memorial to see what works, what doesn't. And then everything's on board for rest of the world. It's a little bit of object here and at Essex, because it doesn't have a best, neither have best feels in its life forward. So we're still backing. Should be operational. Soon as the tech. Uh, so John, you referenced, um, additions that have been made to the style. What do you guys see as needs make forward?
Well, um, obviously we have to go through the budgeting process and, uh, you know, as a team collaboratively, uh, I think to Erica's question earlier, uh, like class size situation, uh, could be better, I guess, I would say. Um, so what Dan was saying is that some point out to be a snapshot and say, oh, this is, this is, these are the numbers I'm planning to plan for next year on, uh, which we waited as long as spring, as we could. Um, and you kind of put all the dealers out there for like, you know, where the industry families are going to come and what grades. And, uh, the joke at summer was like every other day, Marie would walk in my office and say, we've got another family in our garden, second grade or second grade. I'm saying, but I'll be advertising for first grade, also first grade. Uh, so that, um, those numbers went up quite quickly. Um, so we try to do, um, and the class size benchmarks, uh, reflect this and try to keep the class sizes, have the younger grades, um, lower as they get more independent, um, and, and that sort of thing, increase in the class activity as they get older. Um, so class size of fifteen to eighteen would be amazing. Um, I just, you know, I know the, the numbers are also tricky, because sometimes if you put three and one grade, now you have, you know, thirteen, fourteen in the class, and that's, that's useful. Um, so I think that would be in terms of, of staffing, uh, by the, uh, the next launching phase. The, the coaches are in a, you know, a great addition, um, you know, you, you got direction, so we want to be sharp, we know the, 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 how the, 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 again. So, so that's pretty, um, you know, staffable, so there are many talented classes, you're specialists, um, special, uh, so we are.
But I think in terms of that new building, it, it really wasn't a bummer this year to just run our specialized program in programs to Memorial because of the ADP. So I think as a special education teacher at heart to, to lose that, to lose that diversity in the building, to also not only just the students, but also the staff that are experts in certain areas that other teachers may not be as comfortable with. You lose that camaraderie, keep that collaboration piece, and then just the diversity of, of having, um, students with different backgrounds, different abilities in the building. So I think that is like the big piece of like this needing the school committee support when it goes, when we go through this building process, because we'd love to be able to bring that back, uh, just in order to incorporate more specialized programs at Essex.
Just before you go, just to put all of the classes, uh, this is the right or wrong question. I'm wondering if we have, you know, just regardless, the flexibility taken into account of not just the number of students, but also the class itself, you know, that, so if you took a class where they had a class of sixteen.
It's like thirty, you know?
Correct, yeah. And the opposite, a class of twenty-five, you know, I spent a, right here, a class of sixteen, I spent a challenge. So do we have the flexibility, you like to have, take that into account as well?
Yeah, it's a really, that's a really good point, because a lot of times people just look at the numbers and they see, you know, twenty-five and eighteen. Um, and exactly to your point, so what I do is I look at the configuration of the class, um, the needs of classes. You know, so, so some of the needs come with a lot of support, and so that it doesn't have problems bigger than, like, I mean, cards, you know, needs that might not come with support. So, yeah, we definitely take that into consideration.
Do we have the flexibility to really, uh, only two sections, right? Do we have the flexibility to really take that into account? That's quite a good, yeah, so, so we're two sections of every grade. I'm sure, yeah, I mentioned about the seventh, the first grade, so we don't have flexibility, but, uh, for that one.
You're making a decision about where to place that fall swing segment in, like June? And traveling that all the way to summer, what I have in my summer.
Yes, years ago, we used to have three and four sections per grade, so there was a lot, you know, moving things around. Initially, I'm like, I have one. Uh, one last chess piece, where's it gonna go? Everyone's kind of talking about, that was my, my first frame, you know, it was talking about that piece. So we opted to go to the first grade, um, you know, the thought process there is first grade is really where magic happens with reading. Uh, so you have a strong foundation, um, you know, by the time we get to second, third, fourth grade, they're independent. There you go, they start reading to learn. So we can give them a strong foundation, that was kind of, yeah.
And this one, we see the, we remember sort of models that I would get built, we'd see the largest jump in population. Every like nine percent.
That helped me second grade to share this.
So I want to thank you both for continuing to make a vibration, for hearing Scott's school. That's been in the works for a while, but it's great to see it. And for including developing plans for the huge role of survivor. Uh, and I'm very excited about that department. I've, I mean, for that, it's definitely important to be planning and number here to go, and to continue. I would like to request again that we see that definition, uh, because I want to be an advocate of that. And right now, we keep hearing about stepping, you know, be ready to be able to say, yes, this is more all the same language rather than like catch up. Yeah. And that's the website.
Yeah, I know, we didn't have it at our, our get, I'm just worried. Eric, I'm very excited. Yeah. But we can make it more, this is.
For sure.
Sure.
Um, I, I got one more question, I did note that when you were talking, I mean, it, it looks like four or five. And some classrooms, uh, Memorial are benchmarks, so I think it's just to be ready to be back on that and draw, so I mean, a little positive about how it's working, I'm sure. But there are, it could be working more easily. But I, I did also feel like I heard you say that you are experiencing an objective student base and a better student population. So it's, it's still, it's waiting on me, like you're seeing about professional classrooms created for private owners.
Thank you.
So I just think we need to be mindful of what's kind of, like, since I'm a community. So, um, that's just an observation, not really a question. Um, and the only other man that say that, that presentation was great, and two things that I love, I really love the partnerships or explaining that thing. So I mean, that's, that's really awesome, and that, like, everyone bring more basic community to understand what's going on with the school. I think it's really, and, and to also to the students, I think, so you're the one. So that's great, and I love the family, what are the, and, and what I'm saying. I would be all, it's like, you're all.
Right.
This is, I don't know.
Great. Well, thank you both very much for your time.
And your point about, um, the swing program relocating to Memorial.
I personally am wondering how Essex Zone hit up its holding, um, from the state, because you are having. So our new math interventionist, his name is Sandy, if you have not yet had the pleasure of meeting him, you should. He is like the lovely, lovely president, and Greg March did a wonderful job of training him. And Sandy is out there every afternoon, like, very funny to listen to on the walkie talkie, he's got it down. Uh, he learned it faster than I did, so, uh, it has been going well.
She pulled that up.
Oh, I know, I, I was very nervous. I'm, I was very nervous, I'm, I probably like, actually, how does this work? Like, I need to make sure that I know, but we are, we're good. Transition.
Right. Passing just probably our cell phone use and practice of the elementary, as we're trying to narrow down where we, we focus our, from the general, the general philosophy.
Um, so cell phones are in backpacks or off, in, in backpacks, smartwatches. Um, if they're on, they need to be in school mode only. I've already intercepted a couple, um, and had the call from the families, but that, that, that's the thing. It's, um, coming from middle school, it's a breeze. So you also have the cell phone, the module, it's great back at, at, at elementary, because it's not open living, but, uh, everyone is good.
Yeah, no, they're just, they're off. It doesn't, it doesn't come with the plan. We, um, I think coming out of COVID, um, you know, there was much more devices. Um, obviously, like a hundred percent of the time during COVID, and coming out of it, we're trying to, um, win a screen count of devices. Even, you know, the iPads and Chromebooks and some, so.
Thank you, Dr. And thank you for the. Excellent. So continuing with swing new business, that's on the doctor, this is our school committee goal, Dr. Session.
Did you know, Mark?
So, um, uh, would you like to add something, wait, don't shake it back.
In the interim, I felt nervous that my twenty thousand dollar notebook was not active. Um, I was trying to give a positive shout out to Dan, and he's just done a fantastic job getting it. It's actually twenty-six thousand. Is what they, so I, I did my emergency text, Danny, which I said twenty, did I, did I write, are you right when you said it? She said twenty-five, wait, no, twenty-six, so it's really, it's really nice to see.
And shout out to Donna first, for sparking this, taking on a lot of the time to make this topic as well. And Jim Campbell, it's a real success story.
All right, so. So we can alter SC goals, and I think we really kind of start with the scheduling. I know, uh, and unless you receive something else, we really only have feedback from two members. We already feedback on the goals itself, so.
We get back to ours, it's actually that, you know, I don't know. I guess the question I had when I was sending it up last night, and I had to just get it up, in any commentary, is, are they, is this all resume? That we want, or?
Yeah.
Or are we just too busy? I mean, there's a lot to ask, we were busy sitting, writing narratives, but kind of you need to talk to each other about where you are on making something of this, and where the priorities are.
Yeah, and if it's okay with everyone, I'd say we just have a discussion, like, I'd be moderated a little bit, you know, it's trying to be, you know, shortening it as succinct as possible, but, you know, if we do want to get down to even just one or two goals, you know, this isn't something that has a hard stop, like, right? You know, this is something that, again, should be a little documented as we go, right? You, you know, even just during here, and here to here. So, you know, uh, some of these goals are, you know, some of the goals were a bit more pointed, right? Um, and, and that's fine, but, you know, I don't know, you have to buy them anyway, but really, you know, maybe what we're lacking is just, you know, what, what do we expect out of this? Do we, are we hoping and expecting that it will work more effectively as committing? And that's the desired outcome here, but, you know, maybe we just take it back, you know, step back, like, what is the desired outcome here of adding goals? Is it really tied just to this single year? Is it tied to something broader, you know? So I'll take it back, so, uh, let me search, right? You know, in, in your mind, are these goals, you know, a target for this working, you know, session of our committee this year? Or is it something broader? I'll start with my.
Uh, in my mind, it's specific to this school year and the predictable outcomes.
That was my understanding.
Yeah. So, you know, from there, it's, it really is, do we have, you know, let's just narrow it down. So is there one that we want to chew on a little bit tonight and see if we can get for, right? And I'll take kind of nominations for that.
I feel like the easiest one to begin with would be.
I also, for, uh, possibly, since we are about to be a, our, our season right now, to terminate how, first that, how we collaborate with our top partners, it's a decision. I didn't send in my thing, I have to come bring things that I care about. So.
I agree. Sure. I concur.
Yeah, I think, I'm not really concerned so much, well, not really. It's more just a budget planning that we have to put in, rather than, I think, and then, but we personally have also focused on the Essex, uh, going, um, sorry, Essex, I'll be, uh, going.
Make sure my, we put the target into this.
Oops.
So one, right along with what Erica's saying, that we miss.
So one right along with what Erica is saying, that this is timely. Anything that I care about as far as all the other things that we as a committee have our conversation and give directions to Pam and Michelle for, we don't have to wait. We can be, have the conversation, we'll work together on this long enough and see how these things work and give you more budget direction relatively. I would that would be the goal. The second is progress on the timeline, the PPS. That's huge to me and a lot of work coming. And then the third thing that we haven't talked much about is, we talked a little about establishing norms and this ties into Jake's suggestion about or question about, you know, charges for subcommittees. I think that if we. Uh, we might consider a goal to establish norms and charges for some committees in preparation for next year. We can find very mindful that this coming spring, we are going to be in another cycle where three members are up for reelection. And whether three members run for reelection and all remain or or all don't, or some combination thereof, that possibility exists. And I remember really clearly how. How hard that transition can be. So I would love that we are have a really more functioning, working group together to set up next this year. So that that to transition to safe place, no matter what different consideration. I think that's really critical. That's that's my whole idea.
I think I think that I've, you know, I've heard everything that's that the best laid plans of that much of the committee has made that that does turn up to be the case. It's going to be decided as always. So. Well.
I think there's a kind of pad that if we had really clear clearly set up. That's that's my input for those for those things.
Sounds good. So things like everyone agrees on. Having. So I guess. You know, the budget is one of our main goals as well, right? So. Is it, there's different ways to. So is the. Is the most important outcome that we discuss as a committee have been on the early side to say at a very high level? Please share our expectations as a committee for the administration. Is is that the most important? Or? Something else?
You mean to provide them more guidance around what? In my experience with conversations taking place, chairs meetings, Pam and Michelle talking to town partners and all of those understanding kind of conversations taking place. The biggest gift we can give our town partners is that we have direction when we get together because they're. They have each year been waiting for us. And even though we start the conversation quite early, still don't adopt our budget, given the timeframe that's set in the regional agreement. And so quite late in there, waiting for us. We, if we know we're pretty solid on on an area early on, then that's the gift we can give to them so that they can start their planning as well. When you're saying solid on an area, what do you mean by that? Are on a target? So for instance, in in all of the conversation, we always end up coming back to percentage, right? For some of us, that doesn't, that's not, that's not the way we prefer to. You know, understand that some of us don't like whatever it is, but in the end, we have to give them direction in whatever format it is, saying, we want to either hit a target of X percent. Of last year where it ended up being, or we want you to design a budget that starts with level and incorporate some add. Do you standardize just go whatever the direction is that we think we're giving it early enough that our town partners know that and you can start to plan for it. It's not going to be final numbers. But if we're holding, if we're holding back and reserving judgment, so the later we push, the harder it's going to be for them as well.
Just for clarification, don't we usually have? An initial target, initial recommendation early, and most of our challenge comes from responding to the town saying, get it down as far as.
Well, and from somebody in the circle as well, but I'm sure. So that's what I would say. I I feel like there is also a risk inherent in all of that. Early, like last year, I almost felt like we might have been in a better place. We ended up having windfalls of our work, but we ended up having a much lower hope there and living with the budget for. That is typically a great thing to happen in the process, but. Because we weren't able to plan for it, we weren't able to really think as strategically as we might have about what our budget sort of puts out. I just, I I agree with Teresa. Giving administration direction is really important, but sometimes start to do that in the back. Absolutely, absolutely. I've seen it before the past two years. I've been on the finance of the committee. Surveying on it and then shadowing on it as well in a way where the conversation was taking place and we're looking at about, you know, X percent of growth. This is where it is naturally. Where are you guys? I think here's, here's, here's where we are. And those conversations had been taking place. So. I'm seeing it from a different experience point, perhaps.
So so to me. As much as we, that's again, and again, I'd agree with getting things early too. But to me, so much of our budget conversation comes in regards to our relationship with the towns. And I know we're, we're hopefully on a better footing this year, but to me, figuring out that making that collaboration productive and public. Not all the part of it was the sticking point of ours last year. But maybe that, that effective, I think it's going to go a long way to getting to win, right? As early as we get stuff to Pam, that to me is always the sticking part is. It is getting kind of the something the town can stand on. And if the the three-year planning process that the towns have started talking about is a way to get into that, then I would encourage that as part of what we do. But to me, you know, whatever stand we take here, we have, we have to, we have to get a productive footing with the towns.
Well, for me, you know, it's really. It sort of comes down to even just simple guidance, for whatever reason, we decided as I don't have many early on in the process, said, you know, gave guidance to, you know, cabinet administration. You know, this year, doesn't matter what the reason is, we want to see the leanest budget as possible. This year, we want to see, you know, whatever we'd like to call it, the. If you call it so many different names, double service. Or do we want to see? Uh, you know, we feel that, you know, for the past five years, we've been in a mode of, you know. Level. So this year, we need to reverse that trend. If we want to share it up with the administration upfront as well. Right? So those are the type of things in my mind that are in directional early on and are important to decide. I love that. Whereas some of the discussions about, uh, we may need, you know, some of the other parts of this bigger, broader. All sets can be decided a bit later in the year response. That's just for my.
I think that Teresa's point is a big shock. Think about, think about the best ways for us to articulate that. Ready to do it tonight. So I was going to suggest that maybe we talk about that, that goal that we established this summer, but collaborate and budget planning or something. Express, but the one thing in terms of having measurable goals that we could meet, it would be. Formative for me to understand where we stand with, we did send an email to the towns, right? In connection with the collaboration group that happened at the end of last year. I'm just wondering, so if if we can set aside for a second the fact that we we should try to give our administration more direction. We're going to need to think about best way to do that. Can we talk about some of the specific measurable goals and whether we have any progress or starting? Starting collaboration group. So can I, if we were going to. Pull the point what we wanted within our thoughts. I hear you. Can we pause back for one second? Sure. Does everybody want to include? Some sort of clarity and mind bounds guidance to Pam? That's. At least fill them out. It doesn't have, you know, again, it doesn't have to be a number, but.
No, no, no.
Just what I mean. It's just like.
Okay.
Right. I can provide you the forecasted number. Without taking into account the different factors, and it's about 4.3 to 4.5 over the next four years, based on a quite true course. And this needs updating. So I would just be mindful of that. When we're kind of setting up this expectation, so we have to overcome just natural growth first, based on inputs already received. So I don't know how we. How you'd like to approach that. Sorry, Erica. No, you didn't. I was just, I was saying, I didn't know if we're going to make. Progress down this word immediately. And in the interest of making progress, I wonder if we can tap into something more strict. If everybody wants to continue, continue to do it, that is what would make.
I just think this is the most time.
It's the same goal, right? If I'm with the district, then just look at the list of goals that we said with summer.
Yeah.
Collaborate with town and. So I'm just wondering if we tackle, because we don't seem to know exactly.
Oh, sorry.
It seems like we're having trouble articulating exactly what we do or when we do it with respect to the feedback we get if we take a moment and look at the other side of that and see if we can get. But it's not because it's a more important agenda item. It's because. What's that? With the towns. And I wonder too, if we're setting our goals. It needs to be things that we can have some several as well. We can make it tense. We can vote. We can say collaborate with towns, but when I'm saying, what does that mean? Does that mean do what they say? Be available?
Can you refresh our collection? When was like the email that we all discussed together on my? We starting in open meeting format of collaboration. Yeah. When was that sent? And did we receive any response from the town? So sent. May 2nd. I'm just looking.
I can answer that.
We can't all, I know, I backed towards, but I believe we ended with. There's really no interest in a new public body. Maybe my summary.
So there's no interest in a new public body, but there. Or been making concerns with the pride. Format of the collaboration group.
Do you rely on the chairs to communicate progress of each other's bodies? Right? Right? Yeah. I think that's a recent thing, which is original, but it started to grow, it really started to grow. And then it was members, submembers. I will, I will go through, to be fair, my brain is not going to wrap around this right in this moment, but I will go through my emails and refresh and send to. What the last communication was, but what I wanted to recall is that there was, there was not response from either town saying, yes, let's do collaboration again. That it would be great to kind of see how the town responded because I, I've had conversations where it feels like there is a willingness. So if I understood the official response was, then I get in better conditions. I'll, I'll take that on. And I think it's important to have it out there, but. Love to continue, you know. We are. I think some of those emails got, got, they were doing dual purpose as well. There was commentary about that, but also staring about the third party review. So I want to make sure I'm talking apples to apples here. So I will take, I will pull all of that and give a status report.
And have we had any comments for, for any progress on how the towns are thinking about the multi-year planning process? Maybe you can ask them about that. If they've got thoughts about how that rolls out.
I'm, I will, I will pull what I've got, but that. If any of us individually have listened.
No, if any of us have listened in at the time or select for meetings or.
We have a sense of what they're thinking about.
Right, for their.
For their multi-year trajectory, or are you asking about the, the? Pride forward.
Yeah, but but that initial conversation suggested that it would be the two towns and us participation in the multi-year program.
And that has gone.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
A lot of this was in the heat of the budget conversation. Once we all voted and determined the number of it was needed, everything just sort of followed that. Consider valid to just turning the page and starting fresh and not revisiting everything from last year. I think if you kind of go back to overtime, inevitably, this one really ends up being the mediator between two. Slightly different tapes on what the outcome should be for the budget. So it is ends up being on this body to be an adult a little bit. Summary nutshell, I think the most efficient possible is the most welcomed in both towns. Manchester is pretty clear that it shouldn't come with a new program cuts. Unless those program countries people have some type of reinvestment value, like moving off something old and bringing up something new. And Essex is just in a place right now for the foreseeable future. That's what I think I hear from them, that as close to 2.5% as possible. It's going to be needed for them to. And so, so I think what ends up happening is you have to make sense of what, we always have to make sense of what our wants and needs are. Our baseline expenses tell us how much can we add and what, at what rate and how much of the need is a need versus a want for. It doesn't change much from year to year. That's, that's. What's going for us. And it's different. And as we do this, and as we're having this conversation, we're also talking a lot of target reserve. Number, but we've been utilizing reserves to draw down the. The growth. So.
And I think that's something everyone's evolved on over time too, where we don't ever do it, but now it's a, it's a means to support both our program and what our needs are. We just start using that word all the time, support kind of our expenses. Help a town manage where they are in the process. But then I'll just ask you to keep looking at, by surprise. How much of the operating budget do you want to be the burning conversation or potentially the conflict when we're trying to pull everybody together to invest a greater amount of PPS? That's going to be a big one.
I'll say that part of, part of it is making coming back to budget narrative based on program. Is because a lot of the basic meaning, which I think comes down to what is a want and what is a need, people perceive goes differently. And if we could figure out how to say that programmatically, we could be. More articulate about what a wanting to be need is from our perspective. Right now, we know when we talk just huge numbers and percentage, we aren't conveying what. We just have principles that doctors know, things that are happening in our schools that. Stem from my last budget of the lectures. I remember that, you know, that quest that came to us. Now it's happening. So I guess my point is, it's not, it it's really the people who are there in the length of a day articulating their wants versus the needs. Not, I don't think it's our job. To tell, to tell the town that this needs this, they want that, you know, make it flow through us, but ultimately.
You know, make it flow through us, but ultimately it comes from the principals and the teachers.
A hundred percent agree to that, and that's always the problem I try to try to give early feedback on a percentage. It's, I really want to know what our building. Think are the most important things to. Deliver the economic excellence for the people. And when I hear that, I want to figure out how to support it. Support it within confines of what our towns will support, but. The first, maybe the job, I don't feel like I have the information to say, other than just on a roll forward basis. I think we need more, yes or no. But, or maybe I was forgetting, I guess, maybe we could walk through that as an example, so the conversation that we were taking into tonight, which is. There's a perception, I'm not gonna weigh in, whether it's a need or a want. That more teachers right now wouldn't be helpful at the warrants, because there's an incomparable degree for that class size. Is, if you roll back two years, there was an incomparable ability for how low that class size is. How do we frame that in terms of? How would we take that? In terms of promoting the needs of the program, what we're trying to achieve, we can't really make an argument. Based on data or evidence. On our side.
Well, I'm actually going to ask, shake that finger, steer the line out front. So. So you're putting, you're putting me on the spot. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying I have the answer for the program. What I'm saying is we should have a way to talk about this, which is exactly what man is asking us to do. So that's what I'm happy to hear.
The way I would sort of like think about that is. That might make more sense where rather than hiring these extra teachers to, to, you know, support. These classrooms, maybe we go hire a couple more PAs or literacy coaches or specialized math coaches that can float around. And it could be like supplemental educators there. They're there to help maybe perhaps, you know. Many classes, not just, you know, they're not just attached to one or two. And. More cost effective.
Then people come up with recommendations. It's a good example of how it's been talked about for that, for sure. And I'm not putting it on the spot, and I'm not saying we're coming with a recommendation for three teachers, I think. I chose that one because that is more perception than reality on both sides of the issue.
Well, I think that's. What man and John both have said is that. We have experts to advise us about what we need, what the best way to spend this money, and whether it's a volunteer teacher or a specialist or, you know, that's. It's not, I don't think that it's the narrative, I think that we listen to the narrative. And we seek to understand it so that we can explain.
Also, I'm sure how many fellow groups actually paid attention to talk in discussions, I think.
And we start tolerating, I know it feels like we make decisions late, but we're making decisions while other. Districts are just getting going, dropping out their initial budget, so we're doing this, a little bit like John's trying to decide which classroom to put the, the third teacher in. Not having any, like just starting here, they're gonna go, they're gonna put their budget together beginning of March. Having no idea of what. It's hard. So. We're, we're all kind of getting to the same part, which is. The question becomes, and I think we're finally ready to maybe as a committee to, to consider this. What is our philosophy as a body? And we have not had that yet. Do we as a body say? We're here in the budget process to back our experts? Yeah, we're tired, we wanna back you. You've got a plan, a ten-year plan, five-year plan, three-year plan, you've got the plan. Tell us what you need. And then tell us how much it's going to cost, and we're gonna back you and support that. But if it's out of line, way out of left field, we're gonna have to sit here and say, there's simply no way. Or is our philosophy as a committee to say? We take what the towns tell us we can have and then try to fit into that whole. It's two different ways of going about it, but it's what's caused a lot of this. Difficultly, and that's, I think, we're at a point where we could. Hopefully talk about. The reason why I think that we have to do it. First way. Is. Because we do not receive the same asks as both towns. So if both towns said, this is how much we can afford, and this is how much we can. Spend on educating our children. It means. It's been out of budget that, that. Level of growth, but because we don't have consistent. Asks from, from each of the towns, I think that we have to go. I personally agree and. Hopeful that maybe we're getting to that point where we know the body can. And come together with some sense of consensus about what our philosophy of this, rather than just responding, that's what we're asking. I guess that's kind of what I was sort of trying to get off. Getting out early.
So, so three, so many of us, I agree. We have a responsibility to try to articulate what the needs of the schools are based on input of the staff. And support that the best we can. And I think the challenge becomes, we're always gonna be forced to make choices. And the question is, how are those choices negotiated among us and with the setup for the administration? So we can't go in and say, we just vacuumed whatever you said, of course, right? We're gonna have to help and administration. Navigate. Decisions about where the budget goes. Because the towns can't just generalize or. Whatever is asked for, whatever we choose, even if we say we back you a hundred percent. Right, it's just not gonna go through, so at some point we have to have. Those difficult conversations about, right? Budget priorities and, you know.
I think as, I think part of our. And, and this is, this is a hard conversation to have, I'm glad we're starting to have. I think. Our role as a committee is to. Is to hear what the administrators bring forth based on the work they've done and determine, not so much where, not so much helping navigate the. The, where the money comes from and things, but to determine, okay, you brought to us, what is your best? What you as the administration back at the best program within the confines of understanding where our towns are going on. Our job is to say, is this in alignment? With district policy and our strategic plan? And, and certainly some question, ask and, and understand, but if they come to us with that, that our role really is. Not, I don't see our role as. Helping guide the decisions, I see our role as. Saying in this, it's not in alignment with those things that's in the financial.
I, I heard a word when you were just talking, that. Somebody said negotiate. I don't think what we do. I don't think it's not a negotiation, right? It's taking into consideration, it's like. Making a fall for a decision, but it's not like. I don't wanna use that word, negotiate, but that's. Dangerous and.
Yeah.
It's not looking at time, like each of our planes in terms of. You know, of school police charges. By accident, to the towns' charges, it's like that. Use the word like that, it's.
So it's basically, I would say it's a first step process, we used to have a tactic, probably bring that. So like, it's why I think we're being caught and it feels so frustrating for people, we're talking about the three and a half. It's because priority one, you. You have to roll forward your financial obligations from this year to the next year. Just in doing that, we're already two percent higher than we should be. To meet the constraint of one of the community, so we start in depth. Then we need to look at, we go right to students, students are first priority, but we need to look at mandated spending on students first. So even though we might wanna add. A theater teacher at the high school. If we need to accommodate or build a special education program, or add TA one-on-one, or add a teacher, that has to come in first. Because if we don't, then that's a different financial liability or costs somewhere else in the program. Then we get to three, ensuring that the core has reasonable class size. Which, because of the declining enrollment, we've been fortunate and actually grabbed some revenue. Being able to not have to return retiring teachers, which helped us to deal with priority levels one and two. And then we get into, how do we expand and grow our focus? So that I understand the frustration that we aren't talking about a lot of exciting new things, a lot of our plan is really just dedicated to improving our craft. But I feel like we're, we're stuck there until they feel we're really gonna take on going for eight or nine percent. Because. Last year, we were able to accomplish things, and I would call it its own kind of priority four. By reorganizing existing things in the budget, it wasn't in addition by the budget plans. It, it may be we can do a better job, I thought we mapped it out clearly what was going, we're staying, we're not gonna be talking about who is coming, coming, you know, and what the implication is. But the frustration is that just our, our core existence from year to year. Outstrips the growth rate of the plans. So it pushes us into this lower level, uninspiring conversation about managing budget. And not about. But I think the big question is. Is the next two years, the year that we go big to grab. A reset on the operational side, or do you? Try to work within the known confines, minimize energy and input and conflict around the budget so that we can seek. Collaboratively, the resources that we're going to need to address this.
Well, that's the bigger picture in the five-year plan, right?
Knowing that if we absolutely need something, we're coming for.
Yeah, I think it is important that. Orders in Manchester don't feel like we are stalling for brands or needs. Because we are prioritizing. Suggesting that we shouldn't prioritize, but it is a priority, but I think we have to be careful, but there are. Needs and demands in Manchester that people are not coming feeling silenced while we pursue this other.
Right, we have to weigh the. We have to weigh. The priorities based on. And that we have a need and we don't. To have space that provides for. The human race and the gross motor opportunities for kids to get into. You know, of space for adolescents. Yes, done with the boiler. They could build a train, but they don't have the. Bad enough in saying that we're until, so we think that the building budget puts them into this for the months. Here's, are we telling everyone that we need to pause? Other, I mean, I, I, no, I think we need to be very cautious about.
People associate. Yeah, people associate growth spending, that's not, that's not the case, right? We can find. Ways to reallocate the existing resources that allow for more. That's actually something that. We did. That our administrators did a lot of, I feel like to come from where we are this year with these instructional coaches and. The literacy in math that was, the library that. That we're able to build on the budget this year with how much of this road.
It's all strategic planning to go. Agreed, I, I would point out that we do talk about a few things that are kind of hanging out there that haven't pursued, because they are, they are big projects and there's some. Curricular studies to be done, a lot of other things, but we, we will hear about them, we ask the town, why, why aren't you thinking about? Those programs were cut previously or whatever it might be. So absolutely, if we can find the savings in our, a hundred percent, we should be buying them, we should be running. Efficient and efficiently as we can, and if we can reallocate, we should be doing that, we just need to be. We have a financial path to go. We need to make some schedule changes. And addressing obstacles. That were identified, that there are financial paths forward for library. And that's the weekly department.
So, so man, I completely agree with you that. Just given the fundamentals of schools. That, you know, the two and a half percent at the state level and town level. In essence, requires some sort of periodic quality correction, which often leads to an override, right? We have had that in both our towns for quite a few years, with the exception of the past few years, that we had that in place and it did not materialize. I, I. I hesitate to think that we would spring an eight or nine percent. On the towns without some planning. With the towns about that. So, I, I understand, I totally understand, that's hypothetical, right? But there is gonna come a time where we need some sort of direction, right? To me, as long as the, as long as the reserves stay healthy. We don't, we don't need it. Right, but if that, if we continue to draw down and, and the reserves actually go down. Then, you know, then we should be seriously, seriously have to think about that, but we can't. Go after that without. The backing of the towns. And that sounds so, I didn't.
Thank you. No, I never asked them. And like the last.
So I'd like to. So unless there's something. Very budget related.
Don, very budgety related? I'm just gonna add that the. I think that it would be based each.
Don, the budget.
The only. So, I mean, it's not, it is budget related, but it's just something to keep in the back of your mind, it's not a number or percentage. It's, the, the more I'm studying. A long-term solution for Essex is a budget gain for operations, because if we don't have a long-term solution, that. Two point eight or three million, eight percent cap is. They're not going to get very. And that is our. Solution to managing our operational budget, so. I'm sorry, can you say it one more time? I think finding whatever comes of the project without a long-term solution for Essex Elementary. We have a compounded operational budget problem because we don't have enough reserves to manage that facility. And support the operating budget. So it really is a, it's a double win to operations. Not managing student aid. Always first, and it's, it is increasingly. You know, I don't wanna throw equity around, but it's. You've got three schools. You know, and I am very passionate, there was a long-term plan and a commitment to deliver on, and I do feel responsible for advocating for the delivery of the.
I do too.
It makes a huge difference.
Okay.
Do you wanna go with the rest of our team? Oh, yeah.
I'm sure.
Dude, so I have this bullet. Right, we can read that one bullet point was their guidance of Dama Gardner expectations for the budget.
I don't think I got there, but I'm not sure.
Can another bullet point, we understand and articulate the needs of the district.
And another bullet point, we understand and articulate the needs of the district based on feedback from our professionals in the budget. I'm not saying this is the wording for it all. I'm saying this is sort of like the essence of things that we are understand and articulate the needs of the district based on feedback from our professionals approved in budgets and by both suggestions, which is just to simplify even further. The time we just took in this discussion is actually, it's been a real heavy block of time. So my goal suggestion would be to say that it's a goal that we develop our school committees philosophical approach for a budget this year and then engage in the process according to the regional agreement. Based on that approach that we developed. I think that, um, yeah, I think that that approach is the first step to be able to provide examine the entries, I might break it. Oh my God, I'm really, I'm not married to the language, but it was just a simplification here that our goal being to develop our, our school committee philosophical approach to budget this year, to the budget. And then engage in that process according to the regional agreement. From that, from the perspective of that. But that we actually, so it's not part of the language, but we actually take the time to come to some consensus about what that is. All of a sudden, we're it could then from, from there, we have that, we have a sense of, sense of, well, our committee of big picture, what we're going toward. Then all the rest of it can feed back to that. The guidance we give to the end of the show come from that approach of that sort.
Yes, I'm definitely not an argument as well, but my only concept of consensus, which I agree in almost every environment. But right now, we represent the committee, but also constituents in our communities who also want to make sure we're in for to their books and there's a part of saying, what we have this consensus that makes it sound like before we've even heard the voices and feedback, our community that we've decided the direction of.
But I feel like part of that consensus would be we want to listen to. This might be getting into the actual doing the development of the
to get this on the table, let's spell us anything until the river day. We can talk a few minutes between our next two meetings and perhaps we actually put something on a schedule, kind of on our agenda, uh, specifically to discuss this and and I'm not sure if it's a piece of something we go off, but, um, actually have pretty detailed framework written up based off of same with the minutes. We can kind of put something there, just have either be actually like maybe the actual person here or whatever. Whatever it is. Simply sit down and spend 15 or 20 minutes from chat face and then actually get the if that works.
Hit Mary's direction on the process or on the budget.
I'll leave that up.
What we could do on the budget, instead of like all of the, all of the stuff in the bucket and all the priorities. If you have a concept around how to articulate a budget ball that reflects our conversation, you know. Then I'll compile
I mean, you can, you can be very, you have a couple of options to choose, right? So where we want those couple of options to choose, we want the free for all. Like simple things like that. If that's the one, so I have two options that are very, I
I don't mean thinness. I just mean
Right.
Articulate.
Exactly. Does that make sense?
It does. Cause I think I could probably, I'm trying to off the statement that we basically want the most investment, most efficient, you know, stuff out there, like we want to get the biggest bank for our law.
Yep.
While being probably the fact that we already and unmet needs, I write the library and I'm, I'm not reaching any, not any needs to say, I mean, these are things that we can anticipate will come up in such
There have been some exciting changes in for something that's a little smaller, we've all joined forces with little like small you know?
You know, that is, that is an exciting change. There's, there's a, there's a that, that's my official recognition. Not your poker face, my poker face is not as that is very exciting. You guys, right? I think that was a temptation that that number tips is going to tend to be challenge for us. But also, we we used to have to outsource the middle school play to go out.
So moving on. Last agenda item is school committee product. Is there anything outside of your section already?
Um, I just wanted to note how smoothly I feel like this year has started off. Be back to, I feel like every year we get a little closer, right, to the pre-COVID, but I feel like this is the first year where I haven't really noticed changes in and then it took place for years ago, so that's exciting. Onward and upward.
Uh, enter time. Yeah, like people are very excited and very
There's, it's
very hopeful. But yeah, it's not like crazed. There's it don't exist anything. Sorry, I didn't.
Um, so I think one is, um, coming up in November, MCAS is on the ballot at the state level. We have a reservation requirement. Um, I think that I, I'm not suggesting that we put anyone in school districts in a position of taking, but they're, they're on on stick spot to take a position. But I think it would be helpful to me as someone who's up here in our community and all of us are leaders and we understand better how our the professionals in our school district feel about some of this and what are some of the pros and cons that I see. And so if there's an opportunity for that in any way, I would love to see what happened. I don't know what the best venue is or if it's just throwing something out at meetings, but I just know that that would help me have a better So I'm just putting that out there in the comments. And then the second comment is, um, I got email today about counselor corner. Loving that, um, at the high school, I think it's four sessions, but the first one coming up. Um, the, the guidance department, it's not called that, was it? Is it, okay. Okay, the guidance department, no, they're calling it counselor corner. It's hosting different sessions throughout the year to help understand what it is they do and what they're about and giving the compensation they had at our August workshop. I think that's really awesome. I've got it on my calendar and I'm excited for it. Thanks for bringing that up.
The parent education workshop series document. It's going to be ready for the first, the next newsletter. So that'll come out next week, first week of October. All of those will be on there. We're thrilled that they're all back. And if you go to Kate's, this is something that was a regular part of the program. I think we've got some energy in it. So we feel brand new, but there was typically six or seven events over the course of the year. So it does feel like things are coming back on track. We are going to start.
Let's just quickly comment on the Oriole practice school parents. Just a quick thank you to all the teachers, John, everyone else. Fantastic evening. I think you already thought about the few times, but I just like to, the first one back to set more this up.
It's on Thursday. I sent you all the open door schedule and anybody can go to either one of them. Send your own.
Anyone? In the upper court? So, so Jared? All in favor? Yeah, everyone. Thank you, everyone listening tonight. Have a good evening.